We are calling the January 22, 2018 Board Meeting to Order. Thanks everyone for being here. We're going to stand and have a moment of silence, but before we do that, as we stand, there are a few people who I want us to say some extra prayers for. We lost both some staff and some students. CCSD staff members that we lost over the holidays. Mr. Charles Ford from Greg Mathis, who is a student concern specialist. Mr. Ross Smith, who is a math teacher at Daniel Jenkins. Michael Lo-- Dr. Michael Lower, who's a program evaluator in the Office of Assessment and Evaluation. And students, Miles Brown at Ashley River Creative Arts Elementary, Derek Grant from Greg Mathis, and DeMarcus Scovan from A.C. Cochrane Elementary. So as you have a moment of silence, please say their family and your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. And now we have our ROTC to bring us in the flag.
From Military Magnet.
Military Magnet, right?
Military Magnet.
Military Magnet. Sure.
Ready, go. Pose the colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right turn, march.
Thank you very much to the Military Magnet. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. We just did, like, we have Board Member Priscilla Jeffrey on the phone.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the open session minutes from December 11.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes from December 11. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Hollingshed.
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staubes?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. We've got a couple of items for our executive session. If you're looking at your agenda, item number 5.1A2, the D-20 contractual matter has been pulled for tonight. So the first item is the student camp-- these are items from our January 8, 2018 Committee of the Whole Executive Session, and at that time, we recommended transfer appeals for student number 127 and 128.
Move to approve.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve item student 127 and 128. Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Do we have another one also?
Yeah, I'm going to do that when it comes down.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staubes?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote Ma-- I vote-- yeah, I was going to vote Mack. I vote yes, and the motion passes.
How's that work?
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
We voted on the open session minutes, and we have voted to approve the agenda already.
Yes.
Got it.
You did? Okay, the next item is item 5.1A3. This was a homeschool request that we recommended to approve at the January meeting. So we have a motion to approve and a second.
I have one question.
Okay.
Did the parent complete the documentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staubes?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. Then today, so items 5.1B, these are items from today's executive session.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the homeschool request from today's items.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the homeschool request. Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staubes?
I abstained since I was with my CPA.
Okay, Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. We did have a student number 129 to consider for transfer. Does anybody want to take any action on that?
Yeah, well, I think we have to.
Okay.
I move to uphold the constituent district's decision.
Okay, so we're-- we have a motion to uphold the constituent district's decision. All right, Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staubes?
Uphold the constituent board, yes.
Yes. Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. So that is all of our executive session items. The next item on the agenda is special recognitions. So, Ms. Claire?
Good evening, Board Chair Darby, Dr. Posaway, members of the board, and guests. We have a number of special recognitions this evening, so I'm going to try to move through swiftly as I can. First, I would like to ask all of you to stand, all of our board members.
You can stand.
That might be real clear for any of us.
In honor of school board recognition month, we would like to extend our sincerest thanks to all of you. We appreciate the unique role that you play as a school board in championing and advocating for quality education, education governing the public schools here in the Low Country. As a token of our appreciation, we have a plaque in your honor, a copy of the school board resolution signed by Governor McMaster, and a plant. So on behalf of Charleston County School District, thank you.
Thank you. Do you all have time to take a picture?
Of course. Bring the plant, too?
Or the plaque, maybe.
We are not bringing the plant.
The plaque or the plant?
Plaque, plaque.
Do we have to bring our plaques?
Yeah.
We take them out of the--
Take them out of the--
I don't need a plaque. I just need to stand behind somebody.
We're bringing the plaque.
What?
Yeah, I'm standing behind somebody.
There you go. You got the plaque? You stand behind me, I'll step back.
Thank you. Great. Let's give our board members another round of applause.
Now, I would like to ask Jason Sacrin, Director of Expanded Learning Programs, to come forward to present our next honor.
Jason, what's up, buddy?
Hey, what's up?
How you been?
Good.
Good to see you.
Good evening, and once again, congratulations on Board Member Appreciation Month. I'm going to get to this in a second. I know what a thankless job it is to be board members in our community, and I just want to say personally, thank you for the job that you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is a long time coming, but I would like to recognize one of our key partners that we have in our Expanded Learning Program. The City of North Charleston provides unmatched support. Board Member Coats is excited about this one, you should be. Unmatched support for our Kaleidoscope programs in North Charleston. The services roughly come out to an excess of $300,000 annually. It allows our program to service roughly 800 students daily. So we want to personally thank them for their unwavering support for our program and for the Charleston County School District. And I'd like to present the City of North Charleston with the 2017 Supporting Star Award and a fabulous picture with our superintendent. So if you want to come on up.
They didn't want us in this picture.
Okay. The 2017 South Carolina Engaged Community Partner Award was awarded to our department from the Citadel last spring at a partner award ceremony. And I just want to mention, this was a state-level award, and we were nominated as the state partner for Citadel in this category. The Expanding Learning Program was recognized for advocating for critical after-school and summer programs for high-risk students in our downtown schools. The Kaleidoscope program has morphed into a wider array of impactful and quality enrichment programmings, expanding the learning opportunities for children's most vulnerable students. So congratulations to the Expanded Learning Team. So if you're here representing Kaleidoscope and the EL team, can you please stand, everybody, including Ashley and Heather in the back? If you all could please come forward. Please come forward. Ashley and Heather, please come forward.
Thank you. We've got a few more.
Moving forward with our recognitions, in the order in which they are outlined on our agenda, we will have Kathryn Heinz McCormick, Interim Arts and World Languages Coordinator, followed by Jennifer Coker, Executive Director of Alternative Programs, and then Melissa Perner-Gass, Director of Nursing Services, to recognize our remaining honorees. Good evening. Mrs. Mary Katherine Peoples, visual arts teacher at Wando High School, was awarded the South Carolina Art Education Association's 2017 Art Educator of the Year Award, along with the Mary White Award, which is designed to highlight a visual art teacher in the state of South Carolina who has demonstrated a superior commitment to their students and to their craft. The award, the Mary White Award, is accompanied by a prize of $5,000. Mrs. Peoples wrote the Charleston County School District Visual Arts Curriculum, and she has provided multiple professional learning opportunities in cooperation with local arts organizations to other visual arts teachers within our county. Congratulations to Mrs. Mary Katherine Peoples.
Come on up, Mary Katherine. I would like to invite the representatives from Daniel Jenkins Academy to come forward.
The South Carolina Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, or ASCD, the Whole Child Award is an effort to transition the focus from a narrowly-defined academic achievement to one that promotes a long-term development and success of all children. The Whole Child Award recognizes schools that create a culture that exemplifies one or more of the five tenets of the Whole Child Initiative: healthy, safe, supported, challenged, and engaged. Daniel Jenkins Academy was selected as the Whole Child Award winner for South Carolina in the tenet of "supported," by making sure each student has access to personalized learning and is supported by qualified and caring adults. Congratulations to Principal Hancock and her and the staff of Daniel Jenkins.
Congratulations.
If I could get Ellen Nitz and Charlene Barbeau up to the front. Charleston County School District is proud to announce that two of its employees were honored by the South Carolina State Department of Education and the Department of Health and Environmental Control. Mary Ford Elementary School's Charlene Barbeau is the 2018 South Carolina School Nurse of the Year, and Ellen Nitz, Nurse Liaison for Districts 1 and 2, is the 2018 South Carolina School Nurse Administrator of the Year. With 25 years of pediatric nursing experience, Ms. Barbeau has managed several projects at Mary Ford, and under her leadership, Mary Ford Elementary has won the 2016-2017 Boeing Center for Children's Wellness School Health Initiative Award. And among her many accomplishments, Ms. Nitz has worked with Roper St. Francis staff to put on an automatic-- automated external defibrillator, an AED, in every school, and she works with MUSC and the American Heart Association as the lead CPR AED first responder instructor. Both ladies will receive their awards at the 37th Annual South Carolina Association of School Nurse Conference next Saturday, the 27th. That will be in Columbia. Congratulations to you both.
Well, it sounds like we have a lot to be proud about here in Charleston County School District, so let's give all of our honorees another round of applause. This concludes our special recognitions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was great. Again, congratulations to everyone. Lots of hard work out there. Okay, so the next item on our agenda, for those of you who are looking at the agenda out there, we, when we first called our meeting to order before the executive session, we have moved item 10-1A through E to now, and agreed we would move swiftly through it. So the first--
First item up, 10-1A, is for German exemption. This was brought forward by staff as a recommendation, the amount of detail that goes into GIS mapping for students is such that it would be a significant cost barrier to bring in a new vendor. So the request is to just extend it with the current vendor for another year.
For what cost?
It's $40,000 to $60,000.
Okay, so is that in the form of a motion that you recommend?
Yes, it came forward with a-- as a motion to approve.
Okay, of GIS services from the competitive bid process. So we have a motion from Mr. Garrett and a second from Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions? So--
Just move to the next one, then. It didn't vote.
Well, we can vote on each one, so--
Call a question.
You don't have to, I mean.
Call the question on then.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, I was asking you that.
Thank you, I was trying. So we're, this is a proposal to extend the contract?
No, well, go ahead, Todd.
Todd?
It's, it's, yes.
For how long?
It's moving forward. And again, board members, if you've got questions like this, we appreciate getting them ahead of time.
I'm sorry.
With that, as I understand it, it's for another year.
That's my understanding.
One year.
One year.
Got it, okay, confirmed.
If I have questions, who can I contact?
Me.
Okay, so, all right, any other questions on that? Mr. Hollingshed?
Come back to me for a second.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staubes?
Yes.
Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. Next item--
Next item up is move to approve the James V. Edwards Elementary School greenhouse donation, any donations to the district, whether it's property or gifts or whatever, we have to approve accepting them and responsibility of, in this case, it brings $200 a year in expected utilities for the district for a greenhouse for James V. Edwards Elementary School.
Okay, so Todd in motion, Reverend Collins seconded. Any questions? All right, Mr.--
Question?
No question?
Call a question.
Okay, all right, Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staubes?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. Next item--
Next item up is the Audit and Finance Committee Charter and Membership, and this is just, there were, the changes to the charter were just in the, if you look in the back of it, it's a recurring agenda item, if anything, this is essentially, it's an annual calendar so that whoever is running Audit and Finance, or the public for that matter, can look at this and say, all right, what should, it's January, what should the board be talking about this month? So that, you know, in February and March, we know that by March, we ought to be looking at our first reading of a budget. Come May, we need to be voting on. It's just to keep the Audit and Finance Committee on--
Second.
On schedule. All right, so motion, second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Garrett and a second from Reverend Collins. Any questions? Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staubes?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion passes. Next item is D.
D, if I could move to approve D and E together, one is just a further fleshing out of the charter, the internal audit charter for our internal audit department, and two is them planning and telling us how they're going to spend their hours for the year ahead and showing that, you can see on there, of the, say, 9,600 hours left within the remainder of this year, you can see exactly where they're going to be spending each of them.
Okay, so Todd's motion is to approve D and E together.
Second.
Okay.
A question.
Okay, please.
So Todd made motion, and Cindy, a second, to do D and E together.
Who hands up the internal audit?
Ms. Kathy Milne.
Kathy Milne? It is annual?
Yes, we review the charter annually, yep.
But the internal audit stuff, there's a whole calendar for what they're doing for internal audit.
And it has a list of how they're going to spend their hours--
The hours.
--for the year ahead.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions? All right, Mr. Hollingshed?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staubes?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion for D and E passes. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not sure if the staff, these staff members are with us or tonight, or whom we've introduced formally to the board, but I'm going to make sure that if they're with us, we recognize them. They've recently either joined the district staff or moved to a different position. Michelle Simmons--
Yep.
--is with us. She's serving as director, one of the directors of elementary schools. Robin Jones is not with us tonight. Don Kennedy is joining us as, he will be the chief administrative officer. He served an interim in the HCC, and he's promised to help out as chief financial officer and is highly motivated to help us complete that service. He was formerly the chief financial officer with Charleston County Schools and has worked in several other large districts, and actually, we're really pleased to welcome him back from South Carolina to South Carolina. And then Jackie Carlin, I know we've introduced before, but I just want to make sure everybody knows that Jackie is working alongside Kelly Meyer and will be filling in in that position as Kelly moves toward retirement, so.
What is Robin Jones, just so you know?
Robin Jones is then executive director, and Cindy Ambrose is office. Cindy, you want to talk just a sec about what Robin will be doing?
Yeah, she's helping with instructional programs such as ESOL, the library program, the Montessori, and the Montessori online.
That's helpful.
So we want to make sure that we keep communications rolling forward with all the key parties at the same time. This is sort of the timeframe in which the communications began moving apart and not reaching the teacher level last year. So in your packet was a sheet that looked like this, and it was a list of things that we shared with the principals at the principals' meeting, and I'm going to take time to talk about a few of those things. Thank you, a few of those things. First of all, we talked with the principals about the make-up days for our 240-day, our 12-month salaried employees to make sure that we understood exactly what that process would look like. We've held a meeting with staff here at 75 Calhoun, and there'll be a meeting coming up with staff at BridgeU so that we don't have misunderstandings about how the 12-month employees who are salaried will make up those days. We talked with the principals, reminding everyone that they needed to look at the three calendar options, that you'll be voting on one of those tonight, tried to make certain that teachers, students, and parents knew to get online and look at the choices that were provided to them. Starting with the February principals' meeting, we'll be asking the principals to bring with them an instructional leader, a teacher leader from their building. We'll need to find a larger space in which to meet, but we want to make certain that there's a teacher voice represented in our meetings and that a teacher representative is helping repeat what is shared in our principals' meetings back with the faculty and staff at each school. As you know, Charleston County Schools has never been accredited, so we began the process a couple of years ago of looking what it would take to get Charleston County Schools accredited through AdvanceEd, an international accrediting firm. It's a nonprofit, but it's a very intensive and well-regarded process. You can look up AdvanceEd if you want, just do advanceed.com, and it will take you to their site. That process has changed significantly since we started two years ago. It's become much more difficult and stringent because it isn't looking at just the number of library books that we have in each media center or the number of certified teachers. It really looks at our processes. For example, you'll recall us telling you they will observe some of our board meetings and give us feedback on the extent to which we kept the focus on the business of, the core business of the district. So our staff has arranged workshops for principals around AdvanceEd and other issues. They're optional workshops, they'll send out an agenda, but in January, in March, in April, and in May, our principals will have the opportunity to-- April, and in May, our principals will have the opportunity to come in anytime throughout the day and get assistance with any of the major issues, responsibilities that they're juggling. So, that's set up to be both organized in a way that people know, here's the, the time we're going to try to discuss these things, and personalized so that if a principal wants help with a certain topic, he or she calls ahead and, and arranges for that to happen. So, it's, it's open, open office hours with the staff here supporting principals. The next thing we talk with principals about were the five-year budget projections, and we wanted to take just a little bit of time tonight to go over with the board what we shared with principals. So, in your packet was some detailed information, this was a one-page summary. Last time through Audit and Finance Committee to the board meeting, you got a, a four or five-page summary, so we boiled that down to one page. We included in tonight's packet another copy of the op-ed piece that three board members submitted to the Post and Courier. We put a sheet in the packet that looks like this, and I'm going to pass out another copy of that sheet tonight because we want to make sure that we're all on the same page as we talk about where our district stands with respect to the, the budget challenges that are coming up. So, the Act 388 was passed in two thousand and six, and we've begun now to be able to, to see the, the challenges, the patterns that we're experiencing. So, I'm going to start with the top line of this, this particular page. Andy, it looks like this, I think Portia sent it over to you today. So, the first, the first line deals with reserves, and for fiscal year eighteen, we started this year with forty-two million. As we move down the page now, in revenue this year, our financial team projected that we, with, along with the county, projected we'll receive four-hundred-eighty-two million in revenue that will, we budgeted to spend four-hundred-seventy-five million, and we planned to return seven million, five-hundred-thousand dollars to fund balance. So, let's go up to the top of the next column. If we do that, next year, we will start the school year, this July one, with forty-nine million. Our projected revenue is four-hundred-ninety-six million. Our expenditures are projected, if we do only what we're doing today, projecting a two percent increase, a two percent cost of living, the increases in our transportation and utility contracts and so forth, just continue as is, we will spend a little bit more than we're taking in. So, next year, we're off by about five-hundred-thousand dollars. With that sort of fund balance, that's not a problem seemingly. So, let's go to the following year now, FY twenty, school year two thousand and nineteen, twenty. We'll take in five-hundred-six million in revenue, that's what we're projecting, but if we keep moving everything forward as is, status quo, our expenditures will exceed our revenue by eighteen million dollars. So, here's where you begin to see the repeat of the cycle. In the past, the board took the additional expenditures from fund balance, that seems a reasonable thing to do when you're in that sort of spot. You move into the next year then, you start with a fund balance of thirty million, you're projected to take in five-hundred-fifteen million in revenue, we have to pay out five-hundred-fifty-eight million dollars in expenditures, and now, uh, we, we end up in the hole, forty-three million dollars. So, we have to watch this budget multiple years at a time, we can't just look at one year at a time. So, for this coming year, the, the bottom line, the wise course of action is, if we're going to add anything different, we're going to have to take something out. We're going to have to stop doing one thing in order to do something else, because with Act 388, the board has nowhere to go to raise more revenue for your operating expenses. You can raise revenue for your facilities, we're trying to put this in language everyone can understand, not, not the technical language, we can, the board can raise funds for facilities, but you can't raise any more funds for the day-to-day operation of the school system. So, it's a, it's a looming challenge for the board. If we want to move teachers' starting salaries up to, toward forty thousand dollars, we're going to have to think about making some changes in that salary schedule, maybe combining some of the early starting salaries to move up and then hold people on, on a salary for two or three years rather than moving them forward every year, we're going to have to look at some creative solutions. So, you're going to see some of that in the budget recommendations that are coming to you. Complicating things this year is that we had some things like instructional coaches in, in funds that are not going to be available next year. So, we're, we're going to have to work really hard internally to figure out how to continue the focus on the kinds of activities that will get the learning gains that children deserve and the public want with, without increasing our expenditures, because our revenue is not going to grow by much. So, attached to this page is, it says confidential, it's, it's only, it only says confidential because we were fact-checking some of the numbers here. It's, it's ready for public discussion with the understanding that we're still doing a bit of fact-checking, and Andy's going to share this page with those who are in the audience. But these are the main talking points that emphasize what I just said. Our constituent board, several constituent board members have offered to help us with advocacy efforts, as have several parents and community members, on trying to get some changes to Act 388. We're wondering if those changes could be local legislation, since we are a donor district, we know of every dollar collected from Charleston County under the Education Finance Act, we get back thirty-three cents. So, we know if the state gives teachers a thousand-dollar pay raise, the state pays three-hundred-and-forty dollars of the thousand dollars, and the district has to come up with the, the additional six-hundred-and-sixty dollars to honor the pay raise the state gave. So, I know all of you know that, we just wanted to, before we start the budget, make sure that we are all on the same page about how important it is to watch what we're doing, because we'll be all right for this coming year, but if we're not very careful, we're setting the board and the district up for some, some heartache in following years. Do you have any questions about that?
I have a question, yes. Act, Act 388, is that, is that written just in Charleston County or is it statewide?
No, sir, it's statewide.
Statewide, so then all the school districts are doing the same thing?
Well-
Affected, affected the same way?
No, they're not all affected the same way because it, Act 388 redistributes money. Act 388 took the taxes off of your home-
Local residents, yes.
Your primary residence-
For the business.
For, for school operating purposes, and, and the idea was that sales tax would make up the difference, so, and the sales tax, the taxes that are collected from the districts are redistributed to the districts based on how wealthy your district is. So, if you have a lot of property wealth, you get very little money from the state. If you have very low property wealth, you get a whole lot more money from the state, so it takes the money from here and redistributes it. So, um, it's impossible to find fair in such a situation, but in Charleston County, we, we just need some other mechanism to make up for the revenue.
Right, right, because the, uh, colleges, for example, like, uh, like Boeing, for example, even though they're good contributors and support the community, but they got a big tax break on their taxes, I want to say, they only paid two percent, so they did six percent that other, other businesses would pay, and, uh, whatever the percentage is, I know they got the best break around. So, that's, so that's money that we don't get either, but, uh, my thoughts is that when the state, they, they come with Act 388, they had in mind that the sales tax would be enough or more than enough, and would not be adjusted because the, the, the spending power of the people in the local area to fund the school district was what they had in mind, and, uh, we use it, we've been using it since it was put in place. But, so my question is, what, what has happened different this year or the past year or two? It didn't happen three and four years ago, what happened differently? What is differently now going on, all of us now?
What, what, and, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, it, it's always been a challenge for us because of the piece that says we're a wealthy district, so we're, we're only getting thirty cents on the dollar. So, it's, it's been a problem for years, and what, what, for a, a number of years, the board would lobby the delegation and they would, you know, do a hold harmless piece and the, we would get more money from the state because of that. So, it's, and as you can see, if you look back on this data, I mean, that, that trend of why we've had to go in and use the fund balance is because we weren't getting, you know, we're putting more into the state than what we're getting back. So, it's always been an issue. I think one thing that I want to make clear, because my name was on the op-ed piece, and somebody wrote a letter to the editor saying, you know, we don't want, um, proper, you know, primary home, homeowner's taxes to come back, and I understand that, that's not what we're saying necessarily, certainly that could be an option that somebody comes up with, but I think what we want to see fixed is that our hands are tied because they say you're a wealthy district, so you don't, we don't need to give you as much. But, Act 388 limits our ability to act like a wealthy district. Does that make sense?
Oh, certainly, I certainly understand. And so, lastly, being that it's statewide, we would need to see what other district our size and smaller and bigger than ours, how their also impact, you know, we're, we're rich, real estate property-wise, doesn't mean necessarily the dollars, but we need to see how the impact of how it affects other districts in our area that are going, that have the same provisions and it all that we do.
And I, I think, I've seen a spreadsheet before that shows, I mean-
Do's is that as well every year?
You first, you know, because of their growth, they, they are in the same predicament we are, so we, we can get that, that data's already out there.
Yeah, it's the index of a tax affordability chart.
Yeah.
Cindy? So, Madam Superintendent, is this GOF only, or is this all revenue sources on your revenue and extended expenditures page?
It's just a G O F, I think.
G O F.
So, uh, if I'm correct, and I think this is something that even board members didn't realize, cost of living and paying the electric bills and the water bills and the gas on the, in the buses increases about twenty million dollars every year just in the natural increase of cost of services. So, I think that's something that Reverend Collins, a lot of people don't realize, if we don't do anything different-
Mm-hmm.
It's going to cost us twenty million dollars more next year to pay the same light bills, the same water bills, the same, uh, payroll because of the natural increases in cost. And I think what's happened is we're coming to the point where that home, hold harmless provision is, A, it's going to go away. Is there a sunset on the hold harmless provision in Act 388, or is that, they can do it by proviso each year?
I think that's, they can do it by proviso each year.
Okay.
So, if, so if our cost is twenty percent greater each year, wouldn't it be the same thing for the consumer or working family, their cost would be twenty percent more annually also?
Yes.
So, we're all on the same boat then?
No, it's not twenty percent.
It's twenty million dollars because it's a percentage of our dollars.
Right.
You don't have a four-hundred-million-dollar household budget, so your percentage is going to be a little lower.
It's about, that's about ten percent, five percent, five percent.
There are two other things that I wanted to ask.
Yep, all right, Cindy has the floor.
Instructional coaches come from another fund, and you said that those funds are going away as well.
For example, um, they're, um, the, the district had two large federal grants, one of them has already closed out, the other is closing out this year. There were some coaches that were put in what is called maintenance of effort funds that will not continue after this year in the same way, so, um, yes, they're not, not all of them, some of them.
These are grants that are sunsetting, these are not cuts in, um, special revenue and other revenue sources.
They are not due from cuts, it's, it's either a grant that is sunsetting or funds that were, could be used in a particular way, we, we have to do a, a match with the, on the special education, and if we spend more on special education in a particular year and then we cut back, we're required to do something called maintenance of local effort, so you have to put more funds back in to match your per pupil expenditure in order to continue to receive state and federal funds.
Right.
It's a little more complicated than that.
Right.
But that is, is a volatile sort of-
And I think for the boards, because it is very complicated for the board, when we get to these discussions, when we are talking about a source of revenue sunsetting, I think the board needs to know exactly what that paid for, for by position and position description and position location. So, we're not saying we're losing fourteen million dollars, so we've got to cut fourteen million dollars, we're losing fourteen million dollars, and this is what it bought. So, you either buy it with different money or you no longer buy this stuff, because I think we need to see that line. And the last thing, and I know I've said this before to the board, but it's not just Act 388, it is that we can collect taxes on businesses, but the states and the counties can control how much taxes those businesses pay by creating fee and lieu deals that I think we need to seriously see, what effect is that having? It may be an unintended consequence that the state is giving tax breaks not realizing they are handicapping our only income source, particularly when counties do it at a very, very local level. So, I would really encourage the district to look into what, what kind of money is that being left on the table? Our only tax base is business, and then we cannot control, we, entities other than us control whether those businesses pay taxes or not. We've got, we've got to talk about that, it's not just as simple as saying Act 388 goes away.
Right, I agree with that.
All right, Mr. Miller?
Um, I think, I would agree that Act 388 doesn't necessarily help us, but I don't, my, my thoughts are that Act 388 was an attempt to provide some level of equity across the state, considering, you know, certain school districts generate more revenue through taxable income. With that being said, Dr. Postwait mentioned, and as she was going through year by year by year, that if we were to do the same thing each year, X, this would be the dollar amount we're looking at revenue and expenditure. Well, my argument would be that we can't do the same thing we did last year for one really apparent reason, which is student achievement.
It didn't work.
I mean, so we can't, in my opinion, do this year, well, school year eighteen, nineteen, what we did in seventeen, eighteen, because of results or our outcomes or in previous years. So, Act 388 almost forces us, and maybe other school districts, but us in particular, to change the way we do business, to change the way we fund our schools, change the way, not only we fund our schools, but change the way we staff our schools, change the way we do business as a whole. And I think we're going to have to have one of those, you know, come to, you know-
Come to Jesus.
Come to Jesus moments where we put all the items on the table and make a decision, not based on what feels good, but based on outcomes and deliverables and results. What are, and like Todd likes to say, where are we getting our biggest bang? And if we're not getting it, like Cindy, you said, if we got fourteen million, this is what it did, this is the people it housed, this is what their jobs were, were we getting those results? If we weren't, but we got to do that from top to bottom, because I think necessarily going after the legislatures and asking them to change this, I don't think it's going to work. It hadn't worked, they're not listening, and they're not listening because we're the only, we're the tree in the forest that falls, but nobody hears us, because we're the ones probably deeply impacted because of 388, and other school districts are being assisted by 388. So, we're not going to get any sympathy, in my opinion-
No.
-coming at it from that, from that degree. So, we're going to have to change this, and hopefully between now and the budget season, Dr. Postwait and the staff will bring some real innovative, yet purposeful ways of spending, because the whole notion that you can do more with less, you can't, you can't put twenty dollars worth of gas in the car unless you've got twenty dollars worth of gas, so you can't do more with less. But we can be smarter about how we go, how we move forward. And so, Dr. Postwait, when you said, you know, if we do things the way we've been doing it, I would argue we cannot do that, not from a money standpoint, but from an outcome standpoint, we just can't do that, so.
All right, any other? Yep, Kevin?
Um, help me understand a couple of things. I was talking to a couple legislators, and Mike was right, they basically said Act 388 is not going anywhere.
Yeah.
Um, when you take, um, our property taxes-
Everything.
And then you take the money from the state as, how it was explained, and it all balances out, there are the assumption that even if we, and I think the Post and Corey reported on it, if we didn't have Act 388, our taxes, our income would still be about the same. Now, our revenue covenant would still be about the same. My question is, this has been around since two thousand and four, how much of that shortfall is, um, changes in retooling the district, salary upgrades, um, how much of that impacted the budget overall? How much of the reoccurring expenses? Um, it's just not as simple- It's just not as simple as saying that we're going to have a shortfall in 2020. You know, there's got to be a mechanism behind that, the increase. So, I'm playing catch-up on this, but I'm just kind of curious. I, I got some questions, and I think I'll, I'll shoot, I'll shoot them to y'all and then kind of see where we're, the filter out at. But I'm just going back to even the $18 million shortfall. I'm just wondering, coming forward, what was reoccurring expenses that brought us forward until now? I don't need to have an answer today, but I'm just curious.
I think that'll be a part of our discussion that we go through when we look at the budget. But as, as Cindy said, you know, just with normal expenditures each year, the state, the state tells us, we've got to give a salary increase, which of course we want to do, but they, they are not funding, but perhaps 30% of that, then we have to fund the rest. So, I think, I think it's, it's, I don't want to invite.
I think 87% of our budget is salaries and benefits. And remember, a part of this that's really hitting us now is the retirement.
Right.
We, and doesn't that increase 1%? Our contribution has to increase 1% till it caps at what? At how much?
And that was a big impact, I think Dorita said the other day, retirement. How much is that, Dorita?
Dr. Kennedy? For four years.
1%?
We have to increase above what we're currently contributing to the state retirement. We have to increase that every year for a period of years to cover the retirement issues you've heard about in Columbia.
That's a state, that's a state.
That shouldn't be the major impact, it was 1%.
No, by my.
1%, wait a minute, guys, when our budget is 80, and our operating budget is 85 or 87% salaries, because the biggest thing we do is people, teacher, everything we do, and it's the most important part we do is teachers, and those people, 1% is a lot.
$150 million is a lot of money.
So, and then that's why I'm asking the question, the upgrades, what do we add in positions that? I'm not just saying answer now, I'm just saying.
So, why don't you, so we have a budget workshop planned, but why don't you just bullet out what you want those and send them? I think those of us who've been on the board since 2014 will remember that in 2015, for the 15, 16 year, we did retool and repurpose, and we had to make some major adjustments, and we got a lot of pushback about that because that was tough for everybody who was involved, so.
Now, I do think, and I said this before, and I mentioned it like to Jeff, I think sometimes when a district goes forward and does business, we need to find other ways to do, um, private partner, public-private partnerships that generate income for the district, other than the district outlaying money all the time, and we have dormant space, and it's not bringing in, driving any kind of income to help us offset our deficit. We have to start thinking, um, in different ways, as I was talking about the North Charleston piece. I think Chris mentioned something today, it mean a conversation of a piece of property of generating income there. So, we, we're going to have to look at other means if we're going to be a viable economic entity instead of just doing business as usual.
All right, well, so, why, if you'll send those bullets, the questions you have, so we can have those for when we do our budget workshop.
Hey, that's one thing I want to say. And some of you may not be in agreement with it, but the financials and making our financial decisions. I think the board, the board is to be more in board and more involved in what comes, what goes across the table, what's going out, what's coming in. Because too many times we find out what's, what has been spent and what's going to be spent, but we don't have any input in that decision. It's already made for us. And, and I think that, that leaves an open door that you're going to have problems that we can't contest or challenge. Remember earlier in the year, when we gave money to the nonprofits, which, which I found during the meeting, that we gave away about almost half a million dollars.
I think we board voted on that.
Yeah, we, we voted on that.
No, no, we didn't, we didn't, so let me finish, I'll be finished. We didn't vote on it as a piece. We voted on the budget, but not as a piece. We didn't vote on that. We talked about it. Decision was made by us. And then, uh, last year, we told the, the guy from the county stood there with our finance guy and said that we have an extra $6 million. We can give it back to the county. We don't need it, $6 million. And then to come today, to blame.
That's capital, those were cap, that was capital.
But, but still to blame Act 388 for the problems today, which have the years, it's not going to really resolve anything. We have to find a smarter way and a better way to manage our money that we have. You're talking about almost $500 million.
Okay, we, we can agree to disagree on that. So, let's move forward.
Thank you.
What else do you have on?
Thank you. The bottom line on this is, uh, I'm just the messenger. Messenger.
Thank you.
When I arrived, you had been through one cycle of this, and this, you were $26 million out of kilter for the previous year with your, the, the budget the year I came, another $26 million out of kilter. So, you can do 26 million times two, and you look at this final column here that on the, on the sheet that I just gave you, and you can see exactly how you got there. No, no one needs to be blamed. That's how you got there. I'm just pointing out, like we ask our young people to do, to watch for patterns and tell people. When you see patterns of, of something that seems to be cause and effect. So, when we talk about putting two teachers in the classroom, or the need to start more three and four-year-old programs, or the need to support children who need something beyond the regular school day or need alternative options, that costs money. So, we can trade out some of the people we have for new people. You could trade out this superintendent for a new superintendent. It's still going to cost the same amount. So, I would appreciate it if we not start with the blame game. If we start with the facts and try to focus on what we believe the priorities are and work together to create a budget that supports our children and the teachers who are serving them. So, that's the bottom line on this for me. Next, in the superintendent's report with the principals, was information about the teacher evaluation system. So, um, that information that I shared had the following bullets in it. First of all, the state of South Carolina is changing their teacher evaluation process. In South Carolina, teachers must be evaluated according to the state evaluation plan. The superintendent nor anyone at the district office can ever reach in and tell a principal what to do about a teacher. So, let's just refer back to the accountability discussion most board members were having earlier this afternoon. The superintendent nor any of the staff sitting there can tell a principal what to do in terms of hiring or firing a teacher. In this district, it's the principal's decision to hire, and across the state, the principal, the decision regarding a contract is left to the principal. It's been that way all the time I've worked in South Carolina, and that shouldn't be news to anyone. But we just want to point out, as we start this season, that's the way it works. The new state requirements are going to be around a 4.0 rubric. You have to be trained. You have to go to state training. You have to, to pass a test. If you do not pass that test, you cannot evaluate a teacher. If you cannot evaluate a teacher, you cannot be a principal. So, it's a lot of work for our staff to begin to get everybody ready. You may be observing teachers for purposes of contract evaluation to pass that assessment. That's a big piece of information we needed our principals to understand. There are some, some, um, local additions that you can make to a teacher evaluation process for those teachers, particularly your on continuing contracts. That's most of the teachers in Charleston County School. So, there'll be a committee of teachers and principals who'll be involved in recommending the evaluation process for 2018 and 19. The 2017, 18 process was decided and communicated to everyone back in August. The next bullet, Charleston County School District will not use E V O S in conjunction with formal teacher evaluations. We, you, you couldn't possibly do that for at least three years, and I don't believe it was ever the intention of this board to connect E V O S with a teacher contract decision. We talked about roster verified. We only have 11 schools. We even had two years of roster verified information. And in Charleston County Schools, it's important to understand that when, when we talk to principals about this, the principal said, "There's never been a conversation in the culture about an improvement plan that wasn't connected to contract status." That is unusual. In most places I've worked, any employee would expect to get suggestions for improvement on an improvement plan and not to have that impact their employment status. But that wasn't the case here, and it really set people off when we started talking about improvement plans because they thought that it meant their contract status. So, we tried to separate that. We pointed out that Act 94, passed by the legislature, requires a value-add growth measure at the school level. The state principal evaluation process requires, as one of three components of the principal's evaluation, that student growth is considered. So, we have a situation where the principal is held accountable for student growth by state law. The state chooses the value-add tool, and that right now, that tool right now is E V O S. The state has an RFP out to select, um, a tool. It may or may not be E V O S in the future, but for right now, it is E V O S. So, Charleston County Schools will continue to roster verify our schools using whatever tool the state decides. When we get the individual teacher information back on E V O S, we want to make sure that teachers have that information and that principals have that information. It will, it, it tells a teacher whether you're in the top 20% of teachers in terms of growing students on these particular achievement tests from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And it sorts the students into, into groups of students who were achieving at just the same place your, your kids were achieving at the beginning of the year. And this is an important concept. If I teach all advanced students, it doesn't compare me with someone who teaches students who entered two years below grade level. So, it's, it's, it's as fair as our profession can get to making an apples-to-apples comparison. The district was not going to look at individual teacher E V O S data, but what we want to know is if Level 5 is teachers who are in the top 20% who are promoting, um, growth, achieving growth with their students, are the, are, are our students with the highest needs being served by teachers who can produce the greatest academic growth? That's what we want to know. So, all we need to know is patterns across our district. Are our top performing teachers equitably distributed so that students who have the greatest need and who depend on public schools to give them a shot at life's opportunities have access to talented teachers? That's, that's what we need to know as a board, and we will use those data. Even though they're not, not yet officially, um, verified or valid, they're, they're, it's fine to use them for purposes of looking for patterns. All right? So, that's how we're going to use those data, and we made that very clear to principals. In no instance should a principal ever say that a teacher contract decision was made because of an E V O S score. To our knowledge, that did not happen last year. If it did, it should not have. But you would have thought from the feedback that we got that that's what did happen. So, we don't know, but we don't want that to happen this year. So, we've tried to be very, very clear with everyone. So, the, the emphasis that we want to place is on getting better and better, whether you're a classroom teacher, whether you're a bus driver, whether you're the superintendent, whether you're a board member, whether you're any position in this district. We want to place the emphasis on being very honest about where we are today and what we need to do to get better. So, one of the tools that we're going to ask the teacher and principal, um, committee that looks at teacher evaluation to take a look at is this tool from Advanced Ed. Again, that's the accreditation agency, but it's a tool called E L E O T, and it stands for Effective Learning Environment Observation Tool. Because for our teachers whose contracts aren't up for consideration, we can determine our own observation process. We've been using the COT, and we will ask our committees whether they want to continue to focus on COT or whether some schools might like to pilot what it would look like if we looked at E L E O T. The difference is, the COT looks primarily at teacher behaviors, and E L E O T looks at what the kids are doing. So, when you go in the classroom, you look at what the kids are doing. All right? Are there high expectations for the kids? Is their learning being supported? Are they active? Are they engaged? Is the teacher progress monitoring and giving feedback to the kids? Is learning well-managed? Classroom behaviors under control? And are we using digital learning to personalize whenever we can? So, this is, if you hear discussion about that, we're simply going to ask the committee and ask any principals if they're interested in taking a look at what E L E O T might look like along with or in place of or in addition to COT. So, we want you to have that information and, and make sure that we're all on the same page. The next thing I want to share, and the next slide in your board packet, is just outlining that this district is focusing on a continuous improvement process. It's not about inspecting the results and admiring the data year after year after year. That's not what it's about. If you look at the overall results for this school district, we increased in almost every category of student achievement. That was reported to the board in, in the superintendent's evaluation document. But we know that while that's true, there are pockets of children or groups of children for whom that is not universally true. So, it's, it's expecting continuous improvement for all kids. I will just mention to you quickly, one of the videos we asked our principals to watch before the meeting was Demings Red Bead Experiment. We're going to do that with the board one of these days, but the bottom line on that experiment is that, that the organization relied too heavily on inspection and held people accountable for things over which they didn't have enough control. So, we're going to have to give teachers and principals more control over some of the elements of what happens in their schools, and we need to make sure that, that as we open up choices, we equip people to make smart choices, the right choices. So, that, that's pretty much it for the, the things I wanted to share with you tonight. Other than to say that we also emphasized with our principals and asked them to go over the, with every employee who works in their schools, the sexual harassment in the workplace policies again. Because there's, it, there's so much of it, we do not want anyone in Charleston County Schools not to understand, um, the guidelines around that. So, um, in addition to, to sharing with you the information that we went over with principals and getting us all hopefully on the same page about where we stand with budget and, and how we begin to set priorities and how we're going to look at teacher evaluation, we wanted to bring to you tonight a report from David Moore with Public Financial Management, who's managed debt service for the school district for years. We asked him to come and give you a status report, and the slides for his report will be displayed. They were also in the information that you received.
I have one question for you about the, what you said about the, uh, the teacher and the principal, and a staff could not be able, not be able to go there and say, "Well, you're dismissed." What I'm really asking is, what if there's a situation where someone has observed that maybe students are in danger? Or maybe, um, maybe someone's, uh, chronically late, or maybe someone can observe using drugs or they come in with alcohol in their breath? What, what is the recourse that a superintendent or a principal or supervisor can do? Or someone just not, really just not even teaching, just showing up, and it's in the classroom? What, what can be, what is the recourse under the law?
Well, the law spells out certain reasons why someone can be dismissed summarily, and you've mentioned some of them. That dismissal recommendation is handled through the principal. I, I don't think I've ever seen a situation in which the principal didn't handle that recommendation unless it involved the principal.
Right, I'm just wondering, is one of the big cases where this person was the principal's friend. The principal don't want to do anything about it, but then what do you do with the case of that?
I, I haven't experienced that, but if I did, I think that, um, you deal with the issue at hand.
All right, y'all, tell us a little bit about our debt overview.
Thank you. Uh, just for the record, my name is David Moore with PFM. We've served as your financial advisor for a number of years, and beside me is Carol Clark. Everybody thinks we work for the same firm. We do not. Carol works for Hainford Saintler Boyd. You see, you almost see us always together. I always tell people, numbers, words.
And when we try to do the opposite, that's when we get in trouble.
We both, I actually obviously work together a good bit on both sides of that. Just by way of introduction, um, we, we obviously work a lot with staff and the Audit and Finance Committee. And the Audit and Finance Committee really thought it would be important to get the 10,000-foot level view of the district's debt. And so, that's what we're intending to do tonight. If, if it's okay with you, I'd like to step back. We have one little editorial comment. The discussion y'all were just having on budget. We work with school districts all over the country. Uh, I, I live in Florida. We work with all the large districts in Florida. We work with all the large districts in Florida. It's very, as painful it is for you all to have the discussions about budget, it's very refreshing to see the district that's thinking not just to next year's budget process and thinking two and three and four years out. It's so hard because you get in the middle of so many challenging issues in the current budget that it's so hard for you often to look out and surprises happen. And so, it's great to see y'all doing it. It's not always fun when you look at the outcomes because typically most states do constrain your budget. But it's, as painful as it is, it was good to sit in the back and see that that dial over was going on. So, if you could just flip over to page three, just real quickly, we're going to talk, we're going to take you, try to get, avoid getting too far into the weeds, but we're trying to walk you through the debt that the district uses. And at the 10,000-foot level, the district uses really two types of debt, short-term debt and long-term debt. We'll go into that in a little bit of detail. Just from a fiduciary perspective, for you all, you have a very conservative debt structure. Fixed-rate debt, you pay principal every year, you're working through the principal. As a matter of fact, you pay about $30 million a year of principal off. And over the last few years, the district has taken advantage of low interest rates and refinanced, just like you would do in your house, refinance the debt and save over $72 million in present value savings. So, that's just the synopsis of the, for the big picture. Carol's going to walk through the word part, the structure of debt, and I'll chime back in in a minute.
Okay. As David mentioned, the district does have both short-term debt and long-term debt. Short-term you can look at really as cash flow funding. The two types of the short-term debt that we get, we do each year, one of them is the tax anticipation note and this is nothing but operational, filling the cash flow shortfall. As you know, a lot of your money comes in through ad lorm taxes and most of those taxes aren't paid until December or January. And so, generally soon after the beginning of the fiscal year, July, August, you start running short on cash. And so, this is just more or less like a line of credit. The second type, and this, and it is not subject to your debt limit, which we'll get into in just a minute. The second type of short-term financing is the bond anticipation notes. And you'll be hearing a little bit more about that in February because we'll be coming to the board with the resolution for the spring bond anticipation note. And what that does is basically three things. It gives you money for your ongoing sort of capital maintenance, capital technology, a lot of the work that's done over the summer months. It comes from the fixed cost of ownership portion of the bond anticipation notes, things like roof repairs, painting, work on schools that's done over the summer. We also use the bond anticipation note to pay the June 1 installment bond payments. And then finally, most years since we've started the sales tax program, we do a separate bond anticipation note for sales tax in the spring. And that there again is just to allow you to have the funding keep up with the construction schedule. I guess moving on from, onto slide number six, the long-term debt. Back in the early 2000s, the district was funding the long-term capital needs with a series of long-term general obligation bonds that were issued in 2001 and in 2004. Those were refinanced in 2010, 11, 12, when rates were really low. And since then, the district has really gotten away from that since we've had the sales tax program in place. And so, you know, in the future, you may see some long-term debt, but as of right now, we're doing much more just the short-term year or a couple of year financings. A note about long-term debt, it is subject to, you can only issue up to 8% of the assessed value of the district. And that limitation is set by the state constitution. The only way around the 8% debt limit is if the voters were to approve a bond referendum to issue bonds. And that, those bonds would only be limited by the amount that's set forth in the referendum. So, the district lasted that, I think, back in the late 1990s, held a referendum for debt. Finally, another, another type of long-term financing, which is no longer allowed, but back in the mid 2000s, the 2005 to 2009 capital program was funded with installment purchase revenue bonds, which were often referred to as alternative financing. And when you hear us talk about the CF bonds, CF was Charleston Educational Financing Facilities Corporation. And it was a nonprofit corporation that was set up to issue bonds on the school district's behalf. And the big advantage with those bonds was they did not count against the debt limit, but in 2006, the legislature came in and said you could no longer issue that type of debt for new construction financing. Going on over to the next slide, this just basically shows you the school district's current, current assessed value from fall of 2017 is 3.8 million, giving you a debt limit, total debt limit of 310 million. When you take into consideration what we have outstanding currently counting against the debt limit, that leaves it at about 123 million. And that fluctuates from year to year as we pay off bonds that count against the debt limit. And then some of these shorter-term financings like the Fall GO and the BAN, they count against the debt limit, but they're paid off either in all or the vast majority from year to year. So, that frees up that amount of debt limit.
One of the questions we always get asked is, you know, how much can you borrow? In theory, that's the number. Part of that is used, as Carol said, every year is, is when we issue bands, but also keep in mind when you issue it, you got to pay it back. So, it goes straight to millage. And so, that's the tug of war. And then, once you issue it, if you finance over a long period of time, you have no access, you have zero access to long-term debt if you need it to finish a project or something.
Okay. Going on to slide number eight, or page eight. Again, we hit on the long-term debt and as we said, that, the district is not currently using long-term general obligation debt because that's now your long-term capital needs are being funded through the sales tax program. The second half of this page gives a sort of a timing, a feel for the timing of how we cycle through each year. In April or May, we issue the spring ban, which funds technology, capital maintenance, fixed cost of ownership, and the June 1 installment payment. And then additionally, we do a sales tax ban on that same timeframe as needed. Then in late summer to early fall is when we typically do our tax anticipation note for operations. And then in October or November, we do a general obligation bond, which pays off the spring ban and it gives you the money that's needed for the December 1 payment. And that is paid off there again in all, in full or at least the vast majority of it the following March. So, all of these financings get paid off within the fiscal year. And that's how we're able to keep doing this because the debt limit is available. And over on page nine, that just shows you sort of in pictures, a table giving the timeline for how these financing has all hit on the calendar.
Again, on that page, the point of page nine is to highlight really two things. You see us come out, come in three times a year. It's always attached to big numbers and everybody gets worried about, you know, it's $80 million here, $70 million there and so forth. It sounds like you're issuing a lot of debt. All of that debt, almost every year, all of it gets paid off that year. And that's the point of the picture is issue, paid off, issue, paid off. And sometimes a picture, again, the words and numbers, I'm also a picture person. Carol walks through, she doesn't like this picture and I'm like, but it helps for people to realize paid off. So, the point is those, when those financings come through, they're big numbers again, 80, 90 million dollars, but those get paid off every year.
And I guess the only one that does not get paid off every year is the sales tax ban. And the idea there is that right now, the construction's taking place faster than the dollars are coming in, but at the end of the day, no debt service millage will ever be levied to pay that off. That will be paid from the last dollars coming in from the sales tax program.
Yeah. As the backup of, as an exhibit in this presentation, we won't go through it today. But for Audit and Finance, we included one of the reports. We work with the staff and the capital department and also with the sales tax committee and monitor the cash flows every month so that we make sure when you get to the end of that, you have enough. Moving over to page 11. Now moving way back up to the 10,000-foot level, the purpose of this picture is to help you understand how all the pieces of the debt go together. If you look at the bottom left on this chart, it starts at 2000. The district really began a rebuilding program all the way back in 2000. Initially, there was a general obligation bond referendum and that covered some of the early projects. And as Carol referenced, we used installment financings through, from about 2004 through about 2010. And during that period, you issued a lot of debt. The borrowers on this total up to about $80 million a year in debt payments. And that, that was issued, almost, most, all of that was issued back in that time period to fund what really worked out to be close to a billion dollars of primarily rebuilding, but also new construction as well. Since that time, you, you had sales tax one and are now in the middle of sales tax two. The reason we put this chart together with all that space on the, on the right-hand side of the chart is to help you realize by having the sales tax program, you don't have to borrow as much. And so, the final date is December 1st, 2031. I know I'm in the business of getting you into debt, but that's a date that, working actually with Mr. Kennedy in his first round here, we picked that date as the maturity of that debt and have worked hard to make sure no debt, no debt goes beyond that date. So, if we can continue to work with sales tax programs and other tools, you will be out of debt. And at that point in time, when you, when you look at what your capacity will be each year, you would have close to 80 to 100, you'd actually have right out $100 million every year to pay for capital on a cash basis instead of having to borrow. That was the architecture from the beginning. So far, it has, it has worked well thanks to the sales tax. That's really been integral. Very few of us ever get out of debt. It's neat to see that it's possible for y'all. Page, page.
Before we're all dead.
It's got, it's got a ways to go, but 14 years from now is a lot closer than 30 years from now.
That's true.
And by the way, if you've got questions, please feel free to ask. And we'll move through the rest real quick because these, they're just highlight statistics. On page 12, one thing it's important to keep in mind is unlike your mortgage on your house, when you do financing for cities, counties, school districts, you really have a lot of different financings outstanding. You have general obligation bonds you issued in 2000 and 2002. So, while we structure the debt service so that it's level and makes your budgeting process easier because it's level, it's really a lot of different pieces underneath it. Page 13 gets to one of the points that the Audit and Finance Committee likes to see. At one point, there was close to a billion dollars in debt outstanding. You're now down to where it's just over a half a billion. That's still a big number, but when you're paying off 30 and 40 million dollars a year, you work through it very quickly.
So, David, can I ask you two questions?
Yes.
So, first, if we were to pay down this debt, can this ever be used for operations? Because you know, every time we talk about money left on the table, we think it means that we have, we can use it how we feel. What does it mean when we don't have this debt to be paying bills on?
Completely separate funding, separate millage.
Even that money left over would never, ever be able by state law to come into the classroom as it's structured now?
Yeah. You'll have, you'll be at 28 or 29 mils this coming, coming year. That if you, that can only be used to pay general obligation.
And if you don't have the debt to pay, then you don't, you're not allowed to collect the millage to pay. Right. So, it's not like we could pay down the debt, collect the millage, and then put it into operations. That is simply just, there's just a firewall between those two.
And you've still got Act 388 there, limiting what you can raise as far, increase as far as the operations side.
Right. So, and the second question, because you know, I've been asking you this for like seven years, like Series 2009, is it going to be gone this year? Will we, if we were to come back next year, are these things rolling to zero in chronological order?
They don't go by the date of the deal. There's a column in here in the table on page 12.
Page 12.
Yeah. I'm looking at that page, right.
There's a column there and they label maturity date. And if, and what, if you look down, the first one that gets paid off, go most of the way down, the 2013A has the, its last payment this December, December 1, 2018. So, each financing, because it tracks back to a financing that was done at different times, has different maturity dates. So, you are little by little working through actually paying off each piece of, each piece of debt. So, that's the first one that's coming up. And then if you look up, the 2016 general obligation bonds are gone in 2020.
Right.
They are, they're not sequential for a number of reasons. I don't want to bore you.
No, that's fine. So, what we should be looking for is the soonest maturity dates to roll off?
Correct. Yeah. It's all, as I said earlier, we really structured all of these so the total debt service is level. So, your debt service, when you pay off one deal, your debt service does not have to go down because when the deals were all issued over time, they were structured to fill in those little holes to keep it level.
Okay.
But you are working through, like the key is, I put it on, I think the page we were just on, you average paying down $36 million a year over the next five or six years. You're paying 30 or 35 million every year. It's a big, big number.
Thank you.
Last page, and we're done, I'll wrap up. We, we know the millage levy is an important, important number that a lot of people pay attention to. We work hard to keep this, the debt service millage levy as consistent as it has been. As you know, it was dropped a few years ago and raised. It has to get back up to what it really was always meant to be, which is 28 or 29 mils. It's just a fact, like the page I showed you with the debt service, you got to write a check for this much each year. Your millage levy is going to be roughly 28 or 29 mils per year for the next five or six years. And then it begins, as you can see in this picture, begins to drop off. So, just to wrap, wrapping up, you keep in mind that you do have a conservative structure, fixed rates, no variable rate, no derivatives, none of the things that cause problems in the financial markets. The debt is structured, like I said, with level payments so you don't have surprises and you are going to be out of debt someday. Any questions?
Great. Any questions? That's awesome. Great detail. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all's hard work on all of this, both the numbers and the pictures. We like them both. All right. Dr. Postaway?
The financial report was in your packets. If there are any questions, we can ask Kelly to address it and otherwise we can move on.
And may I ask a question? Are we going to discuss the strategic priorities next? This was the document we were told to bring into our January meeting. Is that coming?
So, the strategic priorities tie to the board's decision on the superintendent's evaluation. So, we are holding that. I think that fits with the superintendent's evaluation.
Yep. So, we'll do that as we, that should, can be a part of what we're getting to moving forward on the evaluation.
I'm used to setting those and then letting it drive the evaluation. So, I was.
That's what, so we're halfway through the school year. The next meeting, we'll be bringing you our mid-year progress report on those priorities, even though the board hasn't actually officially set them yet. Okay.
So, since we're on that drive.
Yes, sir.
And since I'm in evaluation mode, you have shared a lot of information with us, a lot of information you've put before us. I guess my question to you after your superintendent's report tonight is what can we do as a board to help you be more effective in your work that your staff, that you and your staff are doing? And it's not a trick question, it's just a question as being asked.
And we ain't got no money.
I would love it if we could set aside time to talk about that under the Strategic Education Agenda at the next committee, the whole meeting.
Okay. All right. Duly noted.
Great. Yep. Great. Okay.
Yes, I'm on the phone still.
Right. We got it. Okay. All right. Anything else under superintendent's report?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, visitor, public comments, and I know we have a student, I think we have four. I was hoping we could ask our student to speak first.
So, we will call Taylor Con Perry up, followed by Willett Wilkins, Suzie Ash, and then Chris, please forgive me, but I'm going to take a shot at it. Poor Zuckzie will be next. Close enough. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Con Perry. I'm a senior creative writing major at School of the Arts and I'm here tonight to talk to the Board of Trustees about student mental health. When I was first accepted to SOA for the sixth grade, I was overjoyed to join a community of passionate and excited students. But over time, my peers and I grew quieter, more exhausted, and increasingly anxious. There were times that I felt nauseous walking into certain classrooms. Despite being someone who was very passionate about my education and specifically passionate about SOA's creative writing program, I felt discouraged. about SOA's creative writing program, I felt discouraged and unsupported in many of my academic classes. Unfortunately, this experience is not an isolated phenomenon. Nearly every high school student I've talked to in and out of SOA has suffered from stress, sleep deprivation, and in the most severe cases, depression and anxiety. These feelings of hopelessness affect students from all communities and transcend regional, racial, and socioeconomic lines. In fact, a shocking one in five students across the United States show signs of a mental health disorder each year. In a system intended to be a vehicle for student empowerment, this reality is simply unacceptable. When student mental health, health is at risk, student participation decreases, test scores fall, student-teacher relationships suffer, and general class morale dissipates. Tonight, I urge the Board of Trustees in CCSD to initiate a dialogue with students across our district to make student mental health a priority. I urge you to ask us what our experiences in school have been like and listen when we tell you what resources we may need. Finally, I ask that you design a plan to mitigate mental health issues across CCSD with student feedback at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, this is an experiment. Everybody close their eyes and imagine that the lights are off. Try to read a book. Can you read a book with the lights off? No, I don't think so. But this is what the Montessori schools are asking the kids to do. The kids are reading in the dark. They're reading books in the dark. So there's going to be a protest if this doesn't stop. Okay? Check on it for yourself and see what the rationale is behind that. Because everybody's asking me, what is the reason behind the kids reading in the dark? There is no reason. Another thing that I do want to point out is that we're going to continue to demand that Burke High School gets the skills and trades back that they deserve, that they used to have. They need the health occupation, HOSA. They need coding. They need STEM. They need foreign languages, and they need all the educational stuff that they need in order to be successful in this world. Garrett High School, they're trying to close it. I remember when Garrett High School was like the best thing, you had to get into that school. Now they let all the things deteriorate in the school. The kids talk about rats being in the school. How come all the money wasn't being spent on getting rid of the rats and making sure that the school is still standing? There's a whole neighborhood back there. The kids are going to be bussed off to some other school, waking up who knows what time in the morning. It's really disappointing. It's very disappointing to hear this, and these are adults up here. We're adults and we can't, we can't get it right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your students with you. So cute.
Suzie Ash?
Hi, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I just want to take a moment of your time to say thank you for starting to love Hershey the way that we love Hershey. We've noticed all the changes that are going on there, and there's somebody there from the district probably almost every day. Sometimes there are multiple people there, and I just wanted to get up and tell you guys, thank you for loving Hershey the way that we do. Thank you, Mr. Barrowey, for taking the time to come and love Hershey. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And Chris?
Chris P.
Okay. All right. That concludes our public comments.
Okay, thank you. And just for those of you who are here for public comments, you know that the superintendent and staff are taking notes and will follow up on any of those items that you brought forward. Okay, committee reports. Next item on the agenda is the 2018-19 academic calendar proposals. I'm sure we'll have some questions, so you might as well come on up. Emily? So are we, are, are you giving us a, one to, are you recommending one to us today based on?
So the survey closed today, so we have results from the survey.
There you go. Sorry, pass again.
And the 838 comments that were listed along with the surveys. As I shared with you before, there's no making everyone happy. It's, one comment says, we love this, and the next comment says exactly the opposite of that. Probably the main, the main topic of the comments was that there was not a calendar option that ends the semester before winter break, and I think we tried to address that with you. And there was some language on the website with the surveys that those, the high school teacher of the year tried the best they could. Now Berkeley County has decided to go ahead with one that ends before. Their only days off all first semester are Labor Day and three days at Thanksgiving, and that's it.
So if they're, I'm, I'm sorry.
If they were, if they were to have weather, they've put all their makeup days in the second semester. We feel like that puts us, if not in violation of seat time, very, very close. And that's why the teachers of the year were told that if they couldn't get a calendar that had at least 85 days in that first semester, that it wouldn't be viable. And we're really close this year, and so that was the, that was the reason that they're, I, they've decided to go ahead and with that and why we, we don't have one of those options. The state regulations say you are to put makeup days in the semester where you are most likely to have the weather. And so two of our makeup days, again, next year would be in the fall because while we had ice this year, we are more likely to actually have it related to a hurricane sometime in September, October.
Can you explain that one more time? Why does Berkeley, they're doing it differently? Is that what you said?
So they are going to go ahead and end their semester before, but they're going to put all three of their makeup days in second semester.
And it's your opinion that violates the seat time law?
So we currently, because we lose days usually in the fall. We have two of our makeup days there to try to make up for that first semester time loss.
Okay. But they just, they just don't have that, they don't have that concern in the other counties, huh?
Theirs are in the second semester.
Because that was my concern about the waiving of the days that we did was the ability for teachers and students, but more so students, to make sure that they got those missed assignments because I'm assuming we would just keep going. We wouldn't necessarily stop. So when would they get those three days of missed instruction? Would they get it? Do we, is it somehow still there? How do, how do we do that?
Are you talking about Berkeley County or our calendar?
I'm talking about us.
So we, ours are in second, so that was second semester. So we, we have second semester to continue, and we actually built, our second semester is longer this year than our first semester. So the time, if you were looking at the balance between the two, when you look at the structure of the calendar with that fixed start date set by the state and the idea of not going past really that first week in June, there are just only so many days.
Yeah, that's right.
To, to go in between there.
Chair. Yep. Okay, all right. So Cindy, then Kevin, then Chris.
So first off, I think what people don't realize is you, we don't sit down and say, what do we want the calendar to look like? We have to sit down and say, here are the puzzle pieces that have been given to us, and they are start date, certain days that are going to be holidays, requirements for PD, requirements for makeup day. So first off, it is phenomenal how you and the teachers work together as a team to create the calendar. And there's, there's kudos to y'all. There's no other way, and it clearly included as many people as it could. So my first question is, is Berkeley County using Election Day as a workday?
They're having school. They're not having Election Day off.
So that is actually a school day for them? And it, so that's just shocking because I think we're going to get to a point, and I think we're going to get there very rapidly. It's nobody's fault, but we have a defined start date. We have 11 federal holidays. We have some do not touch days that, you know, we're, we're never going to put children in school on Thanksgiving Day. That's just a do not touch day.
Or Good Friday, or.
It, it ain't, it, so, but we're, I think we're getting to the point where we're, where schools are not being able to make calendars anymore. You can't finish before the end of the first semester. I'm, I think everybody knows, I'm really wondering if Election Day is a day, it's not our fault. Our buildings have to be used for polling places and how we, how we can't create a calendar that has that be one of the days off. So my question to you is, is there any way in the 18-19 school year that we could revamp this calendar to have Election Day off, even if it meant starting on August 20th instead of the 21st?
We do have Election Day off on all of our calendars.
Family data conference.
So teachers are the only people.
That's what I'm referring to. I'm specifically referring to that. Could we, could, could we, you know, we have the, we don't have the ability to start before the third Monday in August, but could, even if we start on the 20th, is there something we can do that, that Election Day is a day off, period, in the 18-19 calendar? I know you, I, I don't know, because I don't know how you guys had your conversations, but this is going to be a conversation we're going to have to have. If they keep crunching in with federal holidays, do not touch days, professional development days, don't start till nowadays, we're going to get to the point where it's going to become too hard to make a calendar. And I understand, every day that we're open, somebody wishes we were closed, and every day that we're closed, I have neighbors who don't want, want to know why we, why we're out in school that day. I mean, every day is important to somebody in our district. We get that. But specifically to 18-19, is there a way to redo this calendar so that Election Day is not a teacher and parent conference day?
There is. It'll probably extend June into the next week.
That one day?
That, that's, I'm just telling you, that's how tight it is.
That's why I'm asking you, because you guys are the ones that dug through everything. Can you tell me why we're not starting on the 20th? I mean, it seems like that's the biggest issue the state of South Carolina runs into is we, we are dying to get started.
We could do that. I mean, we could start on a Monday. There is, again, teachers took the first pass at the calendars. There is a sense that a first full week of school is not the ideal way to transition back into the start date. I'm just, that's the.
I absolutely have heard that and understand.
So we could, we could make a calendar and start it on the 20th and have Election Day. I think what you'll do is you still have to figure out, though, where are you going to put that teacher conference day, which needs to be a whole day off? And then you have parents who, school's closed on Election Day, and it's closed for the, the big pushback is how many times school is closed. The idea was if you combine those, so people go to vote, they perhaps stop by for their half an hour conference at the schools, you, you don't have, the schools closed on both days.
And I understand that. And are we, is this calendar the full week of Thanksgiving off if we don't have to use the 19th and 20th as makeup days?
Right.
I, I remember when we started that, like, when I got elected, this district wasn't doing the full week of Thanksgiving off. And I remember it was the board that said, we want to do the full week of Thanksgiving. But can we consider that? I'm just, I wonder if, if we were to sit down and say, not, do you believe a full week, and this is just using your example, absolutely a bad example, do, it, it's, the question isn't, do you believe a full week is tough for coming back from break? Do you believe that is tougher than doing teacher-parent conferences on Election Day? Or do you believe having a partial week, your first week, is more or less important than having the whole week of Thanksgiving off? Because we've got to start doing these things in priorities and not individual questions.
So the one day that you can get on that start, will you, if you put that on Thanksgiving, then you're going to have one day off that, you'd still have one day of school that week and then four days off. So, so the, the makeup days are what go on that front end of Thanksgiving. That's, that's the place, that's what they take, where you put them on the first semester part of the calendar.
I would like to see the board work with the legislature to make sure that they understand what is possibly some unintended consequences of some of the rules that we have to go by when we do.
Particularly, we have to start by the third, can't start before the third Monday.
Right. And so I think, I do think you've done the best job you could do. I do want us closed on Election Day. It's just.
Sounds like a legislative reception is in.
Yeah, but it, I think it's just, it's messy, particularly if it were a school day and we've had that. The problem we have is we don't know who's going to be in a runoff. So you can't plan all the days off, there may be a runoff, so.
Because most people aren't off on Election Day.
No, I've never been off on Election Day, ever in my entire life, but this is because we use those schools for polling locations. I do think it's unique. So, thank you.
Okay. Kevin?
Well, Cindy echoed everything I asked, we're going to ask, because I got asked the same question by a few folks, and I was going to wait.
That's gone already.
We got the board meeting, but she kind of beat me to it, and I appreciate it, Cindy.
So, so for both of you, not that we can impact necessarily the 2018-19 calendar, but perhaps we as a board can work on the points that we would want to articulate to the legislative delegation of what state laws negatively impacting our calendar.
And Ms. Woody, can I ask you, you know, we have a board policy that requires you to bring this to us, which means we're the board, we can break our policy. Would it do, would it help to bring this back in March and consider other things? Or has everything been discussed and exhausted that can be, that can be?
So the results we have here is having to put it out to the public for their input, and I read all 838 comments, and I'll say Election Day didn't come up in any of those. I mean, I'm just going to say, of many other things, like, I'd like to take my children's skiing and that, but Election Day honestly wasn't one of those. So we can, I think, my question would be, what's our process? Is that just what the board, is that what the board wants to do? And then we make that the calendar?
Well, no, I, I think that, I think that you answered the question, because the board has to decide whether we want this to go back to, to March. But before I would make that recommendation, I certainly want to hear from you. And you're right, that goes back to what we said, every day we're closed, somebody wishes we were open, and every day we were open, somebody doesn't understand why we don't recognize that holiday. So I understand that, that with 838 comments, this may not have been one of them.
All right, Reverend Collins?
Do we have to set a calendar date by a certain time?
Per board policy, February's board meeting.
It changed that next board meeting.
But people have to plan for, so the next year. All right, Reverend Collins?
Thank you. I'm looking at the half days in June, the 5th and 6th, and then a whole day of the 7th.
That's a teacher work day.
No students.
No students.
No, okay.
No students.
No students coming to school on the 7th.
See what?
It was closed on the 7th, right? June and 7th.
For children, yeah.
Yeah, it's closed, that's what I'm saying.
The teachers have to wrap up the end of the year.
Right, so I say, so there's no school that day.
Right.
Right. There's no, there's a half day on the 5th, Wednesday, half day on Thursday, and half a day, the whole day, it finishes on the 7th. That's the last day at school, right?
The 6th is the last.
The 6th is the last day of school.
For students.
The last day.
So the 6th is the last, June 6th is the last day of school?
Yes, for students.
Okay, so, okay, this, I guess I say, this is Mark half day.
Right. It's the last day, it's a half day, it counts.
It counts, 180.
It counts as part of the 180.
Okay, the 6th is the last day, so the, the 7th don't affect us then. That just affects teachers only.
The teacher work day, correct.
So you have a half day, just that Wednesday then.
Stop it.
Wednesday and Thursday only.
Correct.
And then it'll come back.
All right, Derek.
For students.
The last day.
So, the sixth is the last, June the sixth is the last day of school?
Yes, for students.
Okay, so, I guess I say, this is Mark half-day.
Right. It's the last day, it's a half-day, it counts.
It counts, one eighty.
It counts as part of the one eighty.
Okay, the sixth is the last day, so the, the seventh don't affect us then.
Seventh is a teacher work day, correct.
So, you have a half-day, just that Wednesday then.
Stop it.
Wednesday and Thursday only.
Correct.
And then it'll come back.
All right, Derek?
So, I, so what I want to understand is, what's the rationale for the two half-days back-to-back? Wednesday, well, I know Thursday did-
But rather than one whole day, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
You can't, you have to have a hundred and eighty days of instruction.
Right.
So, you can't combine two halves into a whole, then you would only have a hundred and seventy-nine days that students had attended.
High school students are likely taking-
So, you're, so you're using, you're using to add for your days to make up the one eighty?
Right.
Correct.
So, if we were to take one of those days away, we could, we would have to put students in school another day?
Anyway, you can't combine them in the-
All right.
And if they're a half-a-day, doesn't that count for a full day of learning?
Uh-huh, yes.
So, so now, the kids got-
No, it doesn't work that, yeah.
I'm just saying.
All right, let Reverend Collins finish his questions.
You can only use that, because students are taking finals, and there's, I think you can use it three times a year, something like that.
So, you got one, so, okay. So, you got one on the, on December twenty-first, and then June the fifth, and then sixth, June the sixth, they just missed that day.
Yes.
That's better than we had before. But, uh, now, I'm almost done. In January, the kids get back on the seventh.
Correct.
So, i- is that by strategy that, as you were saying, seventh as opposed to the, the third or the fourth, or, or the second?
So, the public input that was very clear was that that break is expected to be around two weeks.
Yeah.
We cut, we cut the front side so that days were then built on the backside. That even set out.
What, what did, what did the kids come back, came back to school this, uh?
They would've come back on the fourth this time.
Okay.
On a Thursday.
That's what I thought. So, we pushed it four days farther this time?
But they get out, I mean, they wanted, they wanted a two full week.
Get out on the twenty-first as opposed to-
Yeah, I know. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm looking at, if I'm reading this right, is that, uh, the break is started on the, uh, the twenty, uh, twenty-second, no, the twenty-fourth.
Questions about that?
Yeah, so, so the Christmas, December break starts, December twenty-fourth, day before Christmas.
The twenty-first is a half-a-day.
Twenty-first is a half-day, right, but the first day of full day off is the twenty-fourth.
Christmas Eve is on Monday, so they get off that Saturday and Sunday before it as well.
All right. Do you have any questions about that? Your guys, we, in our little thing that we talked about what our role is, we are way down in the operations. All right, Reverend Mack?
I want to have-
I wasn't, I wasn't, uh, I wasn't twenty minutes. I was about two minutes. I would like to-
Two questions. Uh, the first was, um, so, and you may have already said this, and I just didn't get it or didn't hear you, but what is the rationale of, um, ending second semester after two weeks coming back from the Christmas break? And, and the only reason why I ask that question is because, in my mind, it just seems as though, when we break for the Christmas holiday, kids are out for two weeks, and then they come back in for two weeks and then have to, you know, recall all that they have learned, and then take the semester exam and final exam, so it just, and, and all of this is being crammed in, or a study guide is given, whatever the case may be, to try to master what they've, have already left them after that two weeks of break. I'm just trying to, I'm pretty sure there's a rationale, but I need to hear, what is the rationale of doing that?
So, that's how, that's where the number, that's where the ninetieth day falls, when you start the calendar so late in August. The idea this year was, we were able to get, we felt enough days to meet the seat time requirement to end before the winter break. Can't do that next year with the way we, the calendar's laid out. So, when you then come back, you're at that point at about the eightieth day, and you count forward, and that's where it falls, about two weeks later, you hit around the ninetieth day, and that's where the semester ends.
It starts a week earlier.
If you could start a week earlier, we'd be able to end. If we could get the legislature to go to the second Monday in August instead of the third, we would be able to build that calendar to end at the winter break.
A request that can be made?
It's a legislative decision.
It's a law.
So, for Berkeley?
I know.
Hasn't been that forever. You can't, you can't get an exception. We have to go and change the law.
I'd like to ask a question, if I may, of the board. Would it be helpful to you if, at the COTW meeting next month, we bring you the actual calendars on a screen and walk you through the options and, and take that really slowly? Would that be helpful?
You mean the option, the options of what?
Like, we show you the three calendars and why, why, why they look the way they do, and we just walk through it and talk through it one calendar at a time.
But the thing is, is-
I don't think we need to do that.
The thing is, is right, we're, we're getting into, I think, managing that, what we need to understand is what the law tells us, we, you guys, and we can do and can't do, because I think we are supposed to approve the calendar by today, by the February board meeting. So, that would be next month. So, yes, we could do that.
So, I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yep. So, I guess we'll talk about it more at the next COW?
Yeah, but I think we need, we need to answer Eric's question about why, before the legislature made that change and said we couldn't start school before the third Monday, we used to finish the semester before the holiday. So, we need to know what that law is, and then we can talk about how to handle it.
Well, I guess I really don't need to know that part. I guess I just need to know, was it any way possible to fit it in, uh, before the Christmas break?
Not, not next year.
No. Yes, so the answer is no. All right. Okay. The second question is, I guess this is a, I just lost her name.
Emily's?
Cindy.
Ambrose.
Cindy. I just lost Cindy's name. Okay. So, is there any way of building in more? Uh, I know Cindy talked about Election Day, and I'm all, I'm all for more PD days for teachers. So, is there any way of building in more PD days into this calendar with the possibility of, of not with school being closed so much, but maybe building in PD, PD days with substitute teachers, uh, coming in when teachers are breaking for those PDs, giving them more PD days? Is that possible?
So, that would take, what, I have seen school systems do that, it's taken a budget package where you have the school run a professional learning plan, you release the funds to deliver that plan, and they could use it for substitutes during the day. Currently, we do not have the funding to do that. We will be bringing you some plans in the upcoming meetings that really will lay out how we might be able to offer professional learning opportunities, job embedded during the day, using Title I money and some other funds that we already have, not asking for additional, but how can we put a coaching, how can we put coaching structures in place, especially at our needy schools, so that we have job embedded during the day professional learning?
To this calendar?
Um, well, you wouldn't need to add it in the calendar, we can do it inside the existing calendar. Any calendar you pick, we could do it inside the existing calendar.
Okay. All right.
All right. I didn't, can I clarify one thing? This calendar that we currently operate in is the first and only time in anyone's really recollection that we've ended the semester before winter break. That is not typically what has happened.
And that's, that's because we had the eclipse and the legislature-
Right, the start of the early night.
That is the reason we were able to do it this year.
One-time-only deal.
That's right.
This year. Yeah, Michael?
The only thing that I would ask, um, with any calendars moving forward, is could you guys also identify in our academic calendar when MAP testing takes place? I know there's a window for when you, you start and you stop, but could you guys put that also, so we also see that as well?
So, so we can, usually the MAP window isn't determined this early in the year, but we can see about doing that.
We absolutely can give you a testing calendar, and one other thing we can talk about are adjustments to when we, when we do those assessments. I tweak in that just a bit. But yes, we can give you a testing calendar.
And also with that, maybe I think the calendar might be helpful, since we're also asking, um, residents to look at the calendar to assist. Whenever the SAT and ACT tests are given, you know, they, they do a calendar, if those dates could also be identified on the calendar as well, because I think as much information as we can provide to the calendar, I think it really helps people better understand what decisions they want to make based on family vacation, school start times, things like that.
All right, Mr. Strobs?
All right, so I'm, I'm actually looking at the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen instructional calendar for Berkeley County. They actually start after us. If we're talking about starting on the, let's see, that's, no, they start, they start on the twentieth, we start on the twenty-first, I'm sorry. But they end on the fourth of June. I guess my concern is, I do know that, and I, and I know it can't be one size fits all for every single student we have in CCSD, but I, just from personal experience, it seems like the last week or two or more at some schools is really not active seat learning. It may just be having the seat open, but, you know, I mean, there's some kids that will be taking their AP exams, and they're not going to be doing anything else for the next two or three weeks after the April one, and it just seems kind of frustrating to me that we can't make this thing work, like Reverend Mack said, of trying to get this thing finished before the Christmas break. Because I know that when kids go off for the Christmas break, they're probably not going to be doing studying the whole time, and they come back in and they have to try to relearn everything. And I think that's a, a pretty significant challenge. That's, I guess it's more of a comment than anything else.
Okay. Any other, Reverend Collins, yeah?
Yeah, what I was getting at a little while ago, I just, this dawned on me, see, you have the, uh, the early dismissal days for, you have two or three half-days, or two half-days, and I don't know the big difference between early dismissal and a half-day, academically or strategically, but it still amounts to about six days, the parents picking up kids early from school after the year. And so, my concern is, why can't we take these partial days, these half-days, and combine some of these days and reduce it, that the kids are out of school, or some of these calendar, some of these calendar days, I just don't understand why there's so many of them like this. And then, and then, then the last, uh, day, two days of school, from my experience, there's very little instruction that's taking place at school. They go up, there's a class, there's a classroom parties playing, there's activities, uh, they don't go to their class, they don't have to bring a book, everything, everything is already turned in, desks are cleaned out, they're helping teachers pack and stuff, but they don't have a problem helping teachers pack. And so, you say we, we need those two days, but to me, a better use can be made for two, for two school days than I consider two half-days. So, so, so I really don't like the, the idea of having all these different half-days and partial days, but I'd like to see those reduced to a minimum of three, or two or three per year. To me, to me, it can be done, but I, I don't know what you know, so you have to tell me.
So, so, Ms. Woody and Ms. Ambrose, since you volunteered to bring this back to us at the committee of the whole in February, since we don't have to vote on this until February, can we bring that back with a commitment from board members that we'll study up beforehand, and you all can address both our questions of why?
Just do year-round school.
What do we have to do by law? And, and we can look at the calendars, but also make sure we understand what exactly we have to do by law. Can you do that? So, are you guys okay with us pulling this today and?
Sure. I think it would help if we were able to go out and articulate, here's one rule, here's the other rule, here's the other rule, here's this rule. We don't know what all the rules are, and I think that's great, because he keeps saying, why do we have half-days? It makes sense. We have to have a hundred and eighty days. It's not gonna be, it's either they're full or half, because they have to be at school a hundred and eighty days. Those kind of things will help.
We can do a little-
Do you want to know the results of the survey?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so, option two was more than double either one or three, just so you know.
And we'll need to be reminded of that.
Yes, Dr. Postaway?
Thank you. Um, there's no need for us to bring this back, um, and, and we won't make any progress unless we understand what it is you want. So, I've heard very clearly that, that one board member is saying, "You don't want us to be open on Election Day." Is that a value the whole board shares?
It offers kids, but I think it can be a, whatever day it is.
Well, for me, it's a professional development day, so I, I want to keep it as such, or-
It's not, it's a family data con, it's when the families come to have their student-
Family conference day.
Right.
And we didn't have that on that day, this year.
And I've heard several board members-
Oh, well, that's different.
Several board members wishing that we could stay open, that, that we could finish first semester before December, and I'll tell you, when I've had open office hours, teachers have driven after hours to come to a site that's not where they work to tell me, "Please, don't cram first semester in before, um, the winter holiday," because they can't, these high school teachers cannot get the course taught, and kids are having to take in-course tests and advanced placement exams for which they have not had enough days' instruction. That's coming from our teachers. So, just tell us what it is you want, so that we don't come back and have another conversation like this.
You don't know what we want.
So, what, you set the parameters, and we'll work within your parameters.
Personally, I think that we should take action on this. More than half of people voted on option two. Our goal, our, our responsibility and job is not to micromanage this. We may all have personal questions. I personally would love to see the legislature change the rule about the third, um, third Monday, and I think we could do that. I'd be ready to vote on this today, but it's the pleasure of the board. But again, we don't need to go back and have this same conversation, what, what are we asking for that's different?
It, it goes back to teachers, so I just want the instructions, we need to instruct the jury.
Right. Um, I'm, I'm willing to vote on it tonight, but not for the same reason that Kate is. I'm not thinking that this is somehow something we shouldn't have a say in. I think we should, because it's important to the constituents. But I'm willing to vote on it.
I think we should say, we should have a say in it, and we vote on it, but I think we should be educated on why we have certain days.
Madam Chair, I, I don't see that any, any delay or anything we learn is going to change, like, I understand, I'll use Reverend Collins, with your permission, your example. They're not going to come back with a calendar in February that's a hundred and seventy-nine days long. They're not going to take off a half-day. I don't think the changes we're asking for can be done by our staff without some help with the rules that are in place guiding the staff, you know?
Kate, can I say something?
Yeah, all right, Priscilla?
I am finally talking.
Yes.
Scared me to death.
My feeling is that if teachers had input on this calendar, I'm gonna back the teachers' recommendations, as opposed to me imposing something that, that I don't know that much about.
Okay.
So, that, so I'm ready to vote, if this is what the teachers have, um, recommended.
Okay, so, are, can we-
So, let me comment, please.
Yes.
So, it, it was in no way inciting that time was not well-spent.
Right.
And that the collection of information that was shared among teachers and other individuals, I, I think it was more profound questions that we had, that we needed answers to, to be clear on why we're voting on a calendar and why certain things are listed on the calendar. And if we had specific questions, then those questions have been, and now, some of those things were addressed tonight. Now, there are some, some more additives that we'd like to see added to the calendar. Precis, I'll be personal and say that I like to see more professional days, Cindy, added to the calendar for teachers, because that's a strong, you know, if I'm gonna cast a vote, then I, I want to make sure I'm voting for, uh, things that I, that I want to see in and on the calendar. So, uh, so I, I don't want it to go away that, that we're taking anything away from the input or the comments and the hard work that the teachers and the staff has already put into building this calendar. So, don't want that perception to be perceived in that manner. We, we don't want to go back, we want to go forward. So, uh, I think I'm bet, I'm more educated now on why, because I wasn't at the table, uh, but it, it seems as though that we need to then start beating the hammer at our legislators and saying, "Look, we're handicapped to some degree by doing certain things that we want to craft or, or be creative in our, in our school calendar, and we can't."
Right.
So, how, how can you help us, you know, so that we can have more flexibility?
Doesn't cost money, this doesn't change the world, this doesn't increase our budget. This is something I think we should be willing to ask for, to support our students and teachers.
Each of our, yeah, each district should be able to decide that start date. Okay, so can we go ahead and vote? Are y'all ready to vote on this tonight?
Kate is determined to vote on this thing tonight.
On this tonight? If you're not, is anybody not ready to vote on it tonight?
I don't care to vote on it tonight, I'd like to have it in the next meeting.
I don't care, I'd like to come back.
Is the majority ready to vote on this tonight? I mean, it's on the agenda, so, so- I mean, it's on the agenda, so, so...
Well, why don't you ask them what they're, because if they need more information, I'll put them in an uncomfortable position. I'm willing to vote.
What do you need more information on, that, before, between now and the next meeting? I mean, the...
Even if it's not, even if it's a special call by telephone, I'd just like to see the available options that they can create, can have a few days, put together some other options that's similar to this. I don't want to, I don't want to directly change it for, when the work, what the people want.
Reverend Collins, we had, we had three options that they presented to us. That went out to the community, and the community voted. So, what, what do you want to be different? I understand you, you don't personally like the, the half-day option.
The partial days and the half-days, and...
You don't like those?
I mean, but that's, they're not going to change that.
Not as many of them. What I'm saying is...
I don't like to work down on Election Day.
Right. That's really the point I'm making, see.
Then you're handicapping the teacher's ability to get some of the work done they need to get done.
And I don't want to do that either. I, I, all I'm saying is, if we're going to send our kids to school that day, that can get a full day's of education, and take a whole day off when we have professional development, use that day, that, that's the point I'm really making.
Right.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if it benefits anybody, other than sending somebody to school for two hours and then bringing them back home.
But a lot of kids, a lot of kids are taking exams, and based on what the staff who's done the research and spent time on it, that, that's not going to change.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just one person myself.
I understand. So, I can call the question.
Call the question.
All right. So, the question's been called. We're voting on the recommendation for calendar option two, which you have in front of you.
I have one question.
Yes?
I see four early release days. Are, on those days, are they, are the remainder of those days used for professional development? They are?
Yes.
In all four of them?
I think the one at the end of a marking period is a teacher work day.
Okay.
But the other ones are P Ds for school days.
It didn't say that, that's why I...
Then that's a job for making sure the teachers...
Okay, the question's been called. Mr. Hollins, oh, did you have another question?
No.
Okay. Mr. Hollingshead?
Go to the mic and come back.
What are we, are we voting on?
So, we're voting, the motion is from Mr. Reverend Mack. I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the Teachers of the Year and the public, 800-plus who voted and recommended option B.
More than that.
More than that.
6,000 votes.
6,000. So, there were 6,000 votes and 800 and something comments. So, I'm making the motion, do I have a second?
How many of them were teachers?
2,000.
2,000 were teachers.
And 2,000 were teachers, so...
Did they have an opinion? Was it different from the public?
It doesn't tell you...
Reverend Mack or Priscilla?
My demographic.
Okay. So, Priscilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
Mr. Hollingshead?
Go to the mic and come back.
Oh, God, you guys. I vote yes. Reverend Mack, how do you vote?
So, as long as Ms. Woody would relay the message that I appreciate all the time and the talent that was put into this calendar, and that we appreciate all of the hard work the teachers did, so I vote yes.
Will you do that, please, Emily?
I will do that.
Thank you. Mr. Staub?
I vote yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Hollingshead?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Dun, dun, dun.
I'm going to vote yes, but I won't vote yes again for another one that has us open on Election Day for, with staff.
Okay, so we got to work on changing the start date.
Well, that's my heartburn too, but you want to go forward.
Okay, Reverend Collins?
I vote yes, but we reserve thoughts.
Okay. All right. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda, thank you, Ms. Woody and Teachers of the Year. The next item on the agenda is the grade configuration for Lucy Beckham High School.
I move to approve the recommendation that we open with the ninth and 10th grade.
I do have a question for that.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second? So, we have a motion from Cindy and a second from Priscilla, sorry. And just so everybody remembers, this is something that was presented to us at the December Committee of the Whole meeting when we were at Stoll. So, Reverend Collins, your question?
Okay, let's say, for example, if we opened the school at grades nine and 10, which is, which is a high school, which is, which is grade 12, what happens to the students? That they, they tend to wandle down, but they live much closer to Lucy Beckham High School, and maybe they're getting ready to go into 11th grade, and they want to, they want to attend the Lucy Beckham School. Why would these kids be, it's 11th grade now, not 12th grade now. Why, why would 11th grader not be allowed to attend the new school? If they, if it's far closer and far, more convenient there to their home, while we start, while we start the high school, just at grades nine and 10, no way.
So, a couple of reasons, from my understanding, and Chris and I have been involved in this all along, we, the staff made this recommendation to us in the summer. We got a little bit of pushback from some people who had some questions in Mount Pleasant. We had two community meetings, very well-attended, where we asked for input, the consensus, we gave them four different options of what to do. The consensus from those groups were that the most important thing was to decide as soon as possible and get the zoning done as soon as possible, so they would know where their children were going to go. Staff also did a focus group with some students, and then, focus group with students, and then they also did a survey with potential parents, because the zoning hasn't been done yet. And my understanding, and, and what I support, is that they want to open nine through 10, because they've also did research across the state and the country, as when other places have opened high schools, and the nine, 10 option works the best. If we opened nine through 11, we would invariably have people who want to keep their, some kids that want to stay at Wando who are zoned for Beckham. And from a transportation perspective, Jeff made it clear that it would not make sense for us to be providing transportation for Beckham and for Wando for the same group of kids. So, plus, if we have kids going to 11th grade at Beckham and some who are zoned going to Wando, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to predict how many kids you were going to have at Wando, and you wouldn't be able to offer those high-level courses.
So, okay, so I'll make sure I understand what you're saying, so...
Yep. Yeah, hold on one sec, Priscilla.
So, if, if I'm zoned for Lucy Beckham, but I'm approaching 11th grade that following year, I still can't attend Lucy Beckham, even if I'm zoned for it?
Right.
I have to go to, I have to go to...
You go to Wando. Yep.
Okay. That, that's really my concern, but I'll stop there. I don't know if that's really fair, to the families or not.
Okay, Priscilla? Hey.
I don't think there's any easy answers to this, but having been a high school teacher for a number of years, my guess is that a kid going in 11th grade is going to want to stay with their teachers and their classmates that they're going to spend two years with at Wando.
Yep.
I don't know if that came out.
Yep, no, that did, that did, it did. There, I think that was a concern that people had, so... Okay, any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Miller?
With, with students who will attend Lucy Beckham, ninth and 10th graders, who may play varsity sports? Beckham won't have those sports, will they? And if they don't, and they play sports at Wando, will they, will we, are we going to provide transportation to them or...
Yeah, they won't play at Wando, that, yeah, they...
Will not play at Wando.
Most, most programs will begin as JVs.
Okay.
If the sports, if they're competitive enough, they could open as varsity. They'll make a sport-by-sport decision based on...
Based on numbers and stuff like that.
Is that, somebody trying to get that here?
Yes, that's right. Good. Okay. Don't worry, we have the same thing up here. Okay, did that make sense?
That was my, that was my concern, because I think you may have some athletes who would be able to play varsity, but if the school doesn't offer varsity, they just won't be able to...
Play varsity as a nine-to...
Right. So, next question then would be, if that student were to apply for a transfer?
That would be, then they could. We talked about that at the meetings, they could.
If you apply for transfer with those capacities, presumably there would be...
Because it, is it, I thought built in, is Bob here? No. I thought in sports, if your school doesn't offer, but that's different, because you'd be zoned for it, that's different.
You can play somewhere else, I think.
I got you.
We might be able to go to the High School League for an exception, but we don't want to promise that, because that's totally out of our control.
Got you, got you. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. So, this is Cindy's motion, Priscilla seconded, to approve that we're opening nine, 10 at Beckham. Mr. Hollingshead?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Staub?
I'm going to vote no, but it's because I had a, a specific request from somebody, but that doesn't mean anything.
Reverend Mack?
But no, don't change your vote.
No, I had a question before.
Yes.
Thank you, Chris Collins.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. Mr. Miller, you have a question?
Yeah, my question simply was, students at Lucy Beckham wanted to take a course that's not offered at Beckham, but offered at Wando?
Mm-hmm.
Do we provide transportation to that student?
What the, what the discussion was, is that we would provide transportation for things that are at the CAS, because the CAS is to meet, right.
So, only...
That would be the plan.
Just like we don't offer transportation between Stoll and North Charleston High for potential class.
Okay. Same thing would apply.
As Mrs. Darby said, for the Center for Advanced Studies, that's a sheer resource...
Okay. I'm, I'm just asking, because we know sometimes, sometimes, when the right person...
No, you don't even have to... Yeah, you're on.
Makes a comment, gets some, gets some traction, things start to change. So, I know we're having a conversation now about what we will, what we won't do, what we will provide, what we won't provide. Next year this time, it might be a little different.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just want to make sure that it's on the record that there are certain things that we will do, and there are certain things that we will not do, based on policies that we already have implemented in the district.
At other schools, great, good point. That's right. Won't be any different. Yes.
So, I'm just envisioning that, that these kind of situations would, I guess, resolve themselves, going through the constituent school boards. If someone, it feels strongly that they need to have a certain class, that they would apply through the constituent school board for a transfer, and understand that it's not just a class, they're actually going to a different school.
Yeah, they have to apply for a complete transfer, unless it's through the CAS.
Right.
Okay. So, the next item on our agenda is the second reading of policy BDM, which is the, the final vote was all in favor, except for Mr. Staub, and Mr. Garrett's not here.
It's approved.
You moved to approve second reading of policy BEDM, all right? Ms. Reverend Collins, do we have a second for that?
Do we have a second to, for policy BEDM?
What number is that?
That is 9.2A.
Oh, okay.
It's the, it's the, yeah, it's the electronic participation in board meeting.
Rather ironic that we're voting on a policy to allow electronic participation while having electronic participation.
Right.
So, this, this policy has...
Is that me you're voting now?
Turn the phone over.
Well, I think, just the, the only thing I would ask of the board is, we have, we literally brought this to the board in September, and we're just now coming to a vote in February on something that basically says we're allowed to call into meetings. I would hope that we can spend more time on policies that affect students and how they operate and achieve in the future.
I agree.
Okay, so Reverend Collins made the motion, I'll second it, if nobody else has. Does anybody else have any other discussion?
Any discussion?
What the policy is for?
Okay, so, I mean, it is a policy, and at least it said, there's not a question anymore, it does say what's allowed.
Who wrote the policy for it?
Mr. Hollingshead, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Sorry, I turned. Mr. Miller? Don't vote no, no, I'm just kidding. Mr. Staub?
I'm going to be weird again, no.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and the motion passes. The next item is...
Madam Chair, I would like to point out that second reading of policy JFAB is before us. The first reading was approved unanimously on December 11th by everybody that was in that meeting, as well as approved unanimously at the Committee of the Whole meeting prior to that. So, I'm bringing it forward as is for second reading.
Okay.
Make a motion at JF.
Second.
I have a couple of questions regarding the policy.
Okay.
That'll be as brief as possible. Under the section, if you turn to the second page, it's written up at, and at the third bullet, it talks about the $300 real property. So, so I'll make sure I understand, we're, we're saying that we want the county assessment value at $300 or more, even if, even if the appraiser says this, regardless of what the appraiser says, basically.
It's kind of the state law. That's the state law.
Okay, all right.
It's not the, right, CCSD is not choosing that.
County determines the value of the land, based on what I'm saying.
I think, I think you're correct, and that's what they're using.
Yes, and state law dictates that it's the tax value, not the appraised value.
All right, so go down to students who own real property, at the last, the last thing on the page, last paragraph on the page, and it's talking, and so, it appears that the...
Read the sentence.
Okay, I'll pick it where I'm at. Such student may apply through superintendent's office, or his or her destiny, for enrollment at a specific school. And I, and I think, wasn't the process before that they applied to the constituent board, and then they, then they come to us?
No.
Well, that's, what is the process? Who can update us? What is, what is, what is the process in place now, is what I want to know?
The process, the process that's in place now is what's outlined in red. It was just incorrect before.
I mean, what, what, how, how are we doing it before, is what I'm asking.
I'm telling you that what's written now in red is how we were doing it before.
So...
We're not referring it to the constituent district.
So, so if they had, so if they lived out of county and owned property, and they were contacted superintendent's office?
Yes.
And the superintendent's office alone would decide whether to come in or not, or what school, no, what school they go to?
Not necessarily the superintendent's office, it could have been her daily meeting.
That's what I mean, her, she would decide what school the person would attend?
Just for enrollment at a specific school.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, I'm just, so that's, so that's the process in place now?
Yes.
All right. So, what, is there, is there an avenue for appeal in that process, that if a person's not satisfied, or that happens, hey, I have a right to go to this school here, or I have a right to go to Burke, is there, is there a process in place?
Yes, they come to the board.
So, they can appeal to the decision?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Right, but wait, but I'm going to ask a question.
Let's make sure that's what the policy's saying now.
But they don't have a right, if they, if they own the property, they don't have a right, based on the law, I thought, to say that they can go to a specific school. If I live in, on Daniel Island, but I...
The issue comes, Kate, with the magnet schools, county-wide magnet schools. If you buy property in the North Charleston High School attendance zone, then you will attend North Charleston High School. You cannot come and say, I want to buy property here and go to Stoll. But you can apply to any county-wide magnet as any other student who, who is in Charleston County.